Help me in order, everyone rise. Pledge allegiance. The pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and the government. Any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve agenda.
My Timmerman, second by Seepers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero. No presentations, proclamations, or acknowledgements. So we'll open up the public comment. Commissioner Wolf.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilors. For a correction there, I do watch your stuff. And you always think, you know, when they go through your stuff, at all the different ones I go to, I think, could we be cutting that? Could we look at, you know, it's like, why are they cutting that, or why they put, you know, so?
I'm giving you a hard time.
I know.
Okay.
Couple things tonight here. I got, I'd say Paper County Road Two, out this way to the west should be, that final piece done by Monday, hopefully, if the weather is good. We're looking for a new park like administrator. Renfest is open, Renaissance Festival's open there. The county building, having a lot of progress over there, but it's a lot of mess too. So I don't know if anyone's been over there, but it's a, it's a big mess. With, when Tom mentioned voting, you know, we have the absentee voting over there, so we're looking at, offloading, I don't know, we were talking about the Scott County, the highway building out there, possibly, you know, somewhere out here, maybe a township building where people could come and vote early. And so, we'll see how that works out. We're looking at, we have the scale building out by Jordan, I don't know if you've been there or seen it, we're looking at maybe having some homeless people live there, you know, the place is basically empty unless there's police or fire there, so they're talking about, I think, 10 or 12 rooms, I don't know how many rooms exactly, but there's not a big homelessness problem in Scott County, but there is some, and it would just be families, and, you know, just to hopefully help them get on their feet, get into something that's permanent and stable. And then they're off the street, you know, a lot of them will live in Shakopee, they go to Walmart at nighttime because it's open all night. And so they live in their car, you gotta go get something and go inside, and so it's, because it's open. So was, I saw Tom last week, he did a great job last week presenting to Angie Craig and Dean Philip, I don't know if he mentioned that, but...
I did mention it, that was the transportation listening session.
So I was there for another reason, but I could've been there for, I think, three or four days. So, I was surprised, but I was there for 169, 282, and 9 out in Jordan to get that fixed up. It's kind of a bad intersection, they have made some changes over time, but it still needs to have some, you know, better upgrade, that's permanent. And then the last thing, there's a little bit of back and forth over there on 291, Toopie, the wood fitters, they're putting in some homes there, and they had a kind of a tough time, you know, they've, they've been working in there for a couple months here, and then all of a sudden, there was a miscommunication, I think, I don't know, between the city and the county or whatever, and they said, we can't go in off the County Road Two, even though there was a, you know, a deal to let them do that if that ever got developed. And there's actually aprons sitting there, so I think in the end, I think they are going through a neighborhood now instead to...
Dorothy Lane.
To get to that, which, to me, doesn't make as much sense. So, you know, it's just one of those things. So I hope we can learn from that. So, that's all I have tonight. So unless you have any questions?
I have two things. One, thank you for your help with the 291 situation with Gary Toopie. Had a nice back and forth with county administrator, and ultimately, it seemed like a positive conversation that we'll be able to prevent future things, but I appreciate your help on that. On the RTF piece in Jordan?
Yes.
The, is there, that's a train facility for police, correct?
Police and fire, we get people from all over the metro area to come in there, and yeah.
Is the, are the, is the local police departments and sheriff all in support of this?
Not quite. Not. It's, you know, but I don't know if they know everything about it, you know, they think it's, you know, you're gonna put some homeless people out in the middle of, it's two, three miles away from Jordan, so probably they think they put all those people there, it's gonna be trouble, but I, I think that, you know, sometimes worrying about something happening is worse than the actual what happens. You know, these are families, they are gonna stay together, there's gonna be people that are gonna help them, it's not like they're getting dropped in, and you guys just take care of yourselves, this is, they will be looked after, you know, there's, you know, things that we have to do to, you know, make sure that they pay for themselves.
When will that be? When will a decision on that be finalized?
I don't know that whole thing yet, but, you know, Tom, would you?
Yeah, I can give one more question. The concept was first presented at the joint, the board for the joint training facility, which I sit on at their last meeting, just to find out whether or not the board would be open to further exploration of the idea, so they're currently working to see whether or not it's feasible and what it would actually look like, but Tom's right, they're not, this, they're looking that this would be only a certain class, or certain types of individuals that would be low risk. We currently have people that reside there now, we've been leasing out the resident, the dorm portions of it to Valley Fair for their workers for the last few years, and the idea is to make use of the facilities there potentially meet a need. But the issues there, of course, are security, not only for the site, but also for the individuals that are there, how do you provide supervision, how do you keep separation between that and other activities that are going on inside, things like that. So it was, last I heard, it was, it was very conceptual, and there was a lot of...
That's right.
...light work that you...
Thanks. So we, yeah, we just, we'll see what happens, but it would, it would be nice. So, hey, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else like to speak under public?
Hey. Mr. Seduski.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmember, city staff, and chief, Tim Seduski, 26705 WordPress support, just presenting this evening on behalf of the Elkhorn Memorial Chamber of Commerce. Just kind of a nice update with the city. It's been a while since I stopped, so I didn't want you to forget about me. First one up, though, just a kind of a fun one, make, please, if your calendar would allow, come by Firehouse next Tuesday, coming up Tuesday, 5 to 7. Just an after hour, tonight's get the business community together, invite over our members at the chamber, and I know with so much happening, it'd be great to see anybody that could attend.
Next up, kind of a really nice event that's gonna be exciting this year, Point of Impact. I think it's our fifth year, not quite sure, but that's really grown very nicely, we're excited to have Chief Brady present this year as well. Point of Impact is really all about giving back to the community, educating our young drivers, safety, and also educating parents. It's amazing how many times the parents will leave and go, I had to think about that, I'm teaching by example in my driving styles, and I will admit, I'm one of those that took that away, so. Sponsors this year, just to let you know, the people are helping in that one, obviously, Chief Brady is helping with that. Mayo Clinic has added this year, that's really exciting, because they have a driving simulator to simulate distracted driving, that's what I've heard of it so far. That's actually super exciting, I'm gonna be, I'm out of town, so I'm bummed out, because that'd be really cool, but Mayo Clinic, Merrick's Towing, Automotive Ingenuity, Bodyworks, and Farmers, our, and chief is helping to get that in. So it's all about community safety, a great, would encourage that attending as well, September 24th, Tuesday evening. The chamber has some, had some changes, we've, we want to welcome aboard Rebecca Devine, she is a community member here, she's gonna be assisting at the chamber as an assistant role, supporting, supporting the members and supporting the events that we have, and also wanted to just kind of give a public, Erin Smith, thank you for her work, input, and impact on the chamber, she has left it a better chamber with her help than previously. Last up tonight, is we're really looking forward to State of a City, that's gonna be on October 8th. I won't be in town next month to come back and warn you of that, so it's fun to bring it up right now. Yeah, the quick one is actually gonna be October 8th, 6:30 to 8, State of the City. Not on the committee personally, but the concepts that I've heard early on, sound like they're very open, engaging, and it will be a great event. So one for the, put on the calendar. We have more items that we're working on, but I'm gonna hold off right now. Yeah, so I'll leave something for next time, but I won't, I'm gonna leave one more. The chamber is proactively looking at, we've had the community Christmas tree lighting, holiday tree, whichever we wanna call it, I like Christmas tree, and looking at the progression of where things are going, the chamber's kind of had that on their vision of saying, things will adjust, so it's something that we're proactively looking out there, just on the radar, and so it's nice to keep you guys informed, it's something that we're in the future, there's nothing happening yet, just kind of talking about it a little bit, so. Questions at all?
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you for your time and support.
Anyone else like to speak under public comment? Once, twice, all right, public comments closed. Consent agenda. Any questions or concerns or items to be pulled?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion by Timmerman.
Second.
Second by Schwittenberg, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four zero. We have no public hearings scheduled, surrounded general business. Pete's Hill Development. Your name?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approvals related to the Pete's Hill development.
And I have a short hour point presentation outlining some of the items and some feedback needed from council related to the proposed plat. And a little background on the property, this property was annexed by a joint resolution into the city, and it was approved by the state on June 20th. The property is 36.42 total acres. The developer is currently proposing a 45-lot subdivision, 22 single-family lots, and 23 twin-home lots. We have before you tonight a request for rezoning and preliminary and final plat approval. There was a public hearing held by the Planning Commission for the rezoning and preliminary plat that's required under law and our city code on July 30th. The Planning Commission did find that the plat complies with the Conference of Plan zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance, except as specifically provided under the draft PUD zoning. And the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the development with conditions. Specifically related to the rezoning, the Planning Commission did find the request meets the minimum requirements for rezoning and PUD zoning under our code. PUD zoning requirements that would specifically apply to this development are contained in the ordinance that was in the packet, so there's a special set of zoning requirements that would apply just to this development. The PUD zoning is being requested to allow twin homes within the development, and also smaller lot sizes and lot widths on some of the lots, and also reduced front yard setback requirements in the single-family portion of the development. And of the 45 lots being proposed, 16 lots don't meet either lot size or lot width requirements, but most are very close. The R1 zoning district standards were applied to all the single-family lots, and that being a minimum lot size of 12,000 square feet, and the R3 district requirements were applied to the multifamily lots. And then, in exchange for some of the deviations, as noted, the developer is proposing to dedicate Outlets A and B to the city, and provide brick or stone on all of the front home elevations, wood will not be allowed as exterior building material, all of the twin homes would have a unified architectural theme in terms of color and front facades, and the developer's proposing to construct a walking trail from the development into Pete's Hill Park to the north, and connect to the existing trail system. And then additional plantings are proposed between the single-family and multifamily segments, sections of the development, which is, all of which are above and beyond minimum city code requirements. Just so, on the left, I'm sorry, on the right-hand side, I have highlighted Outlets A and B, which would be dedicated to the city. In the upper left, I've just circled the proposed trail connection at the north end of the cul-de-sac, referred to as Pete's Hill Trail, and then the existing trail to the north there in, in Pete's Hill Park. There are a couple of things that council input is needed on, this is a bit unusual, however, at the Planning Commission meeting, we had a two-to-two attendance, there was one member that wasn't able to, he was out town on vacation, and the Planning Commission was just absolutely tied on this specific issue, there are two issues that we need your input on. And the first is regarding lots that were proposed on Beard Avenue. So Xerxes Trail, Beard Avenue, and 273rd are existing streets, they are all designated as collector streets in the city's transportation plan. The city's comprehensive transportation plan discourages driveways on collector streets, and based on that, the city engineer has recommended that no lots be allowed, or no private driveway accesses be allowed on, onto Beard. The original proposal by the developer showed, proposed two lots along Beard with two driveway accesses, you can see in the lower right depiction, and the city planning department recommended that those two lots be combined into one lot. There were some other challenges with those two lots in terms of setbacks and buffer requirements, so when we got to the Planning Commission meeting, two of the commissioners basically concurred with Rich that no driveway accesses be allowed on Beard, and two concurred with the recommendation that the, that one driveway access be allowed. So unfortunately, we don't typically like to have to bring this type of thing to the city council, but they were at an impasse on the specific issue. One other item that council input is needed on is regarding a trail on, along 273rd Street. Similarly, the city's transportation plan recommends a construction of a trail along all collector roadways at the time of development. It's not contained in the city code, but it's a recommendation in the transportation plan, and the city can require it under the terms of the PUD. The city engineer is recommending that the trail be constructed at this time along 273rd Street. So that would be from the intersection at Beard and Xerxes, all the way to the east, to the entrance into the development. The Parks Commission had a opposing recommendation that trails not be required at this time, just based on the lack of pedestrian routes along Xerxes and Beard at this time. Since the Planning Commission meeting, the developer and their engineer have revised the construction plans to show a trail graded in along 273rd, but not paved at this time. So we're also looking for your input on that item. I guess I, Rich can offer more input here, but I did include the map on the lower left. The map on the lower left shows the city's existing park system, and then existing trails and sidewalks within the city, and Rich indicated at the Planning Commission meeting that the section along 273rd will help, you know, eventual loop of the city from Windrose, from the Windrose development through this proposed development. So I'll let Rich speak more to that as, after the presentation. Also included in tonight's request is a request for wetland replacement plan or mitigation. There is a wetland on the very north side of the property, touch it also crosses over into the city park. The developer is proposing 7,930 square feet of impact to that wetland to get the road in. The technical evaluation panel meeting was held on October 15th, and found to meet the requirements of the Wetland Conservation Act sequencing requirements. So included in the request tonight in your packet was a resolution number 1950, which requests approval of the wetland replacement plan application, and directs both in a make to issue the notice of decision, and that document has been drafted. This is just an area photograph, that kind of shows, you can see the Windrose development to the northeast, and the water tower to the north, and so that wooded, heavily wooded area to the south is what would be developed. Included in your, the request tonight is approval of the development contract, which was drafted by the city attorney, it has been signed by the developer. This contract incorporates conditions recommended by the Planning Commission, does include financial securities to ensure completion of the streets and public utilities in the development. And a little different from a typical agreement, it provides for assessment of the development fees to the individual lots to be paid at the sale of the lots or no later than three years. So there's just a little under $9,000 per lot that would be assessed. So the action that is being requested of the city council tonight is to provide a recommendation regarding the lot along Beard Avenue, and whether that should be included in the plat or eliminated, a recommendation regarding pavement, paving of the trail along 273rd at this time, and then adoption of ordinance 199, rezoning the property, adoption of resolution 1950, approving the wetland replacement plan, and adoption of resolution 1951, approving the preliminary plat, final plat, development contract, and assessment agreement. This is the plat, the current plat, and the area proposed for rezoning. Developers are here tonight, and if Rich wants to add anything, I'll provide him. It's recommendations.
I'd be happy to provide the rationale for my recommendations if you're interested, otherwise, stand for questions.
Please, I'd be interested in the rationale.
You wanna go to the outlot first, or the lots on Beard? So it's true, these are designated as collectors, there's some nuance here, in our plan, we have major collectors and minor collectors, and there's a slight difference. On a minor collector, there's a mix, although we try to discourage private access on minor collectors, but it's a mix of access and mobility, to try and minimize the number of driveways so that traffic can flow more smoothly. On major collectors, it's not a discourage, it's a deny, it's a stronger level of trying to keep that roadway preserved for mobility to the extent possible. So driveways, when people are backing out, it interferes with traffic, and it can slow things down, we're trying to move people to Conroe Two and to the freeway, that's the system you adopted, and the reason for those functional classes is for that convenience of getting to your job in the morning and other trips like that. Speeds tend to be higher on major collectors, so driveways aren't as compatible with those higher speeds, and the other concern is precedent. If we allow one here, it makes it harder to deny future ones. So I didn't really feel I had a choice, your policy is no access on major collectors, and that's the basis of my recommendation.
This is a major collector?
This is a major collector, yeah. And when you look at a map, there really are no good future major collectors, north-south, that will offset pressure on Beard as the city grows, until you get quite a bit further east.
What other driveways currently exist on that stretch of road?
The only one that I can see is the, there's, yeah, there's some township ones, and there's the maintenance facility. I don't view existing driveways as an excuse to allow further ones, I view them as a headache you'll have to deal with, and let's not add more. This is how I look at it. But that has been offered as, well, we already have these, adding one just makes it that much harder in the future to say, well, we've got those ones, why can't we have more? Yeah.
Quick question for the builders, how would it affect your plan if we were to say no to the driveways on Beard? Would you still be able to successfully and financially do this plan?
I can't address it. We've tried to be flexible on this, every lot is important, and this is a financially challenged development. We're coming to this, working with some ownership that's been involved with this property for well over 15 years. They had false starts a couple of times, they've been into the city a couple of times, we got involved to try to get this done. And every lot is important. I can tell you, if I came to this but for the involvement of a partner and friend of mine, I would financially walk away from it. Every lot is that important, and I'm not telling you we're not moving forward, but I think we've offered a concession, we're willing to work with one lot on this, and we've offered to have the driveway have a turnaround, so any, any movement off of this home would be no different than if there was a road there.
Right.
And hypothetically, if the character of the land behind it to the east was different, the spacing, we could have a road there, and it could be a public road with a lot, much greater movement impacting the movements on Beard. It's one home, and a limited number of movements, so it feels like a concession on our part to go from two to one, and we're willing to work with that. We'd really like to have this lot.
That was gonna be my next question, is I know at the Planning Commission meeting, they had talked about a turnaround...
Yep.
...in the driveway, and I wanted to know, that was my next question, is if you are still planning on possibly being able to do that as well?
We absolutely are. When we were looking at two, we looked at combining the driveway, and we looked at it a little differently, and we're here tonight willing to accept one, and we would definitely have that turnaround. So any cars coming in and out of that would face, nobody would back into Beard, they'd come in and out just like they would if it was a road connection, well, it's not controlled obviously.
Right, right.
So anyone else have questions for the...
I actually have another question for Rich. What other major collectors in the community have driveways on them? So Xerxes is a major collector as well?
And I, if I'm, well, go ahead, if you have further questions, I think I can kind of see where you're headed. My concern is not immediate, I mean, there's not that much traffic out there today, but it will continue to grow, and those driveways will persist for a very long time, and they're hard to get rid of, once there's a building there, there's nowhere else to go with it. So that's the, it's, it's the long view that, that I would worry about more than anything today. You know, obviously, Xerxes functions, and there are several driveways on it, and that's our, that's our, probably our busiest locally-owned roadway in the community.
Have, have any other homes or access points been allowed on Xerxes since it was classified as a major collector?
No. No, these are legacy drivers. Jump to the sidewalk, the trail?
Sure.
The thinking besides that it's part of your park and trail plan to provide these along major collectors, we are, this would be the last link on a sort of baggage trail system that would allow users from the south end of Xerxes to go all the way up to Windrose Curve where it connects to Xerxes on the north end, without having to walk on Xerxes itself, which is, like I just mentioned, our busiest locally-owned roadway, I mean, two, there's other busier roads, but that's our busiest local street. And so you'd be able to walk, say, from Boulder Heights, which is some of the streetwork today, you'd have to walk on Beard, nothing I can do about that, that's an existing condition, but instead of continuing up Xerxes, you could go over to that trail, go up through this development, to trails at Pete's Hill, and then up through Windrose, which is much lower traffic, lower speeds. We're working on a grant with a connection that it's been awarded... speeds. We're working on a grant with a connection that it's been awarded, I believe, to make a connection through Woodcrest, which would take you then all the way back down to Windrose Curve in the north end. Or you could go through Pete's Hill and come down, cross, and get to Glenboro without having to go on Xerxes. And that was the, you know, we've talked in the past about trying to create a pedestrian, trails along Xerxes and the right of way and topography constraints make it extremely expensive. That's the rationale for this. I recognize that nothing appears to be on Beard. That could change in the future, but putting nothing here just gives us another stretch we'd have to deal with in the future to try and fund and implement. I have one other issue ready and it's come up that we probably should be aware. You can go to the grading plan maybe if there's. Overall view. That's good enough. So our engineering manual that we provide to developers and was adopted by the council years ago in 2009 as policy requires sump pump connections for every house unless they back onto a wetland or a pond where that sump pump discharge isn't going to go onto a neighboring property or public property and cause a nuisance. It's escaped our notice during the early review, but especially the homes along, between Xerxes and the road, there's nothing provided at this point for that. So the issue is, on one hand, it's required by policy. The concern is that those sump pumps continually discharging would work their way down onto Xerxes, which has a curb and gutter. We've seen from past experience that that can cause nuisance conditions. In the summertime, you get a slimy green algae that grows, so it's slippery and unsightly and can turn smelly. In the spring and fall during freeze thaw, you get layers of ice that build up that, if you remember Carter Street?
Brady.
Brady, we had some really serious challenges and ended up putting in an after the fact system to try and keep that water off the road. On the other hand, these are deep lots. It could soak into the ground by the time it gets there. The point of actual fact, I don't know if they're even going to have sump pumps running. It's just a, it's hard to predict that type of thing. So to draw a hard line and say you have to put in a tile with a connection would be policy, but is it really necessary? I just want to bring up the issue. I'm open to something that at least allows us to put in a fix if and fund it, whether that's by committing each lot to that eventuality should a problem, you know?
What would you recommend?
Well, I mean, ideally, we could say if the concern is that because of the topography and the length, maybe they're required to discharge to the front and that some sort of a tile with sump pump outlets is put to each lot on the front side. It could be front or back. I don't care. But if we, five years down the road, those houses are all built and we have that condition on Xerxes, we got a big problem to try and solve.
I have a question. Could the sump pump discharge on steep slopes cause an erosion problem? It's a factor.
I, that's probably fairly easy to defeat because it's just a small pipe, but they run all the time, sometimes. Sometimes they don't. You just don't know. So I, we haven't worked up a solution. I know it's a cost issue. I know it's, you know, that's a concern. This is a tight project. At the same time, you know, it can be a real problem. So at a minimum, I'd want to have a space left for it to go in and some way to commit those future owners to pay for the assessments or something, if that's even legally possible. Andrea's shaking her head no, so. Moving ahead, without that in there puts us at some risk of possibly going through a improvement project with a bunch of neighbors who feel they shouldn't have to do it. It isn't going to bother them. It goes away down the hill. It's very steep, but the problem could develop. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
If you're familiar with that stretch of road down the hill, it's generally shaded most of the day. So if you are getting excess water getting onto the road, you could, can they hold up in that location on a curve?
Does anyone have questions for Rich? Gentlemen, would you care to share thoughts?
Trying to resolve the issue, this was brought to our attention this evening. Rich, is there not a ditch there before the road?
Nope. No, there's a curve there because it's, the road comes right down through. And so there's no ditch on that side. It's curb and gutter on one side, ditch on the other. So yeah, it'd be running down the ditch to a storm sewer, so we could have several hundred feet of, even more. Yeah, it's a long run there.
To your point, we have really, really long lots.
Yep.
A lot of green space and under, there's no running step there.
I can see that. It could very well soak in and never be a problem. I just don't know how you predict that because it's steep too, so it's going to run very quickly. Especially you have a few that are pretty persistent, running a lot or frequently. There's, you know, it gets to where the ground's saturated. You can't soak in and it'll work with that long, is my concern.
Hopefully, we don't have sandy soils up there, but I understand your concern.
Yeah.
The other thing is, can we tie in with the trail thing a little bit? I've been real estate for 20 years and I've seen countless developments that have sidewalks or trails that have no beginning and no connection on either side, but yet somebody's got to maintain them. Someone's got to shovel them. Someone's got to repave them. Someone's got to seal them. This trail will be replaced by your city long before it's connected, I believe. I would, what if we agreed to put a grade in for the trail? So when you have time, it makes sense to pave it. But with that, we put a swale in next to that to make sure the water runs within our land down to whatever appropriate place it should go to keep it off of Xerxes and tie it with our water shaft.
I hear you and I'm generally of that same opinion, but we do have walkers today walking on those roads. And so this would give them a place to go that's not on Xerxes is the, you know, the reason I'm bringing this up. Besides the fact that it is policy.
Well, there's been plenty of complaints of walkers that use Xerxes all the time and they're complaining about traffic and everything, so.
I also admit, I don't know if people will actually use this. I would think they would if they know it's a safer and built route, but you can't, you can bring a horse to water, but it's a sticky, sticky issue. But it seems to make sense to me that you have a safe alternative that's basically going to be almost fully built by the time this goes in, other than that stretch and that little piece through Woodcrest, which we're already working on.
So did you just say that you would be willing for the drainage issue, you'd be willing to put a ditch down through upon Xerxes?
We just, this is new to us. We have an engineer department and I'm trying to figure out how do we resolve this. The road construction changed a little bit using a geomass. We don't, the tile that we had in the front is no longer there.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it'd be an easy solution to jet out to the front. But again, we've got this incredible depth of lot and absorption possibility. Again, the trail thing, I'm the planning commissioner for the City of Victoria. We're all about our lakes and trail connectivity. I totally get it. But if there's no beginning or end to it, it becomes a maintenance issue for our city because we have to maintain these, clear the snow, but it's no place for it to go. It becomes a pain in the backside. What I'm thinking, just thinking, I haven't talked to these guys yet, if we change the grade load at the bottom of the hill, put in some sort of waterway that would catch the water before it got to Xerxes, before it, and then grade for your trail for future connectivity or future building when the time comes. It may save the city some money, it'll save the city some maintenance, and maybe simplify our project a little bit.
I'm open to that type of solution as long as I don't have to go and fight with those residents. You know, you're going to have 20 of them in a few years, or my successor. Those are not fun projects. So if you have something that keeps that water off of Xerxes, I can't really see any other nuisance it could cause, so I'd be open to something like that.
I'd want to work with you guys. Rich, you had a great to work with from the beginning.
That sounds like a reasonable solution, reasonable possibility.
The guy doesn't know more about this than I do. So I'm going to let him address that.
My name is Dan Schmidt. I'm a civil engineer in the project and I've been working on these, this project with Rich for a couple of months here and it's been going pretty well. I think Rich brings up a point that we should probably look into. The deal with sump pumps is easily resolved on all the, on most of the houses, except for the cul-de-sac west. There's no storm sewer in that area. The way I, you know, the more I look at it, you're going to have that, the rear, from the rear of the house to the back, you're going to have X amount of drainage and then you're going to have the sump pump providing X amount of drainage. I think you could put some drain tile in to divert the sump pump and you could still have the same issue with the water flowing over the trail and creating a moss on there. And I've seen that before. One thing we could do is, you know, we can route, I mean, we'll be, with gutters, we'll be routing water to the front. So a lot, we might even have less water going to Xerxes than we would normally.
It's really the sump pump stand because they run sometimes all the time or multiple times a day, every day. A storm comes, runs off, and it's gone in a few hours. It's not sitting there always wet. It's the always wet that we need to figure out.
Could we, could we daylight the drain tile instead of, because we have all the grade that we'll ever need to daylight it out the back? So then you don't have the basket filling up and then pumping. You'd have a slow trickle, you know, as it hits the drain tile and then daylights out, flows. And then that way you don't have to worry about the pump being unplugged or burnt out and you have gravity. You could have a pump as a backup and instead of having to dry for five hours and then pumping a whole bunch down there. And then it, the ones on the north are about 60 feet from the curb and the ones in the middle where it's wider is about 100 feet of overland flow. I don't know, I'm open to suggestions. I just think the drain tile option is very, could be very expensive because you're going to run it 1,000 feet at 20 bucks a foot and you could, I mean, in 20 years, you could have clogs and then you got easements and...
Well, it's steep terrain and trees. It's not easy. I don't know if we, I haven't looked at the tree coverage along the backside of the curb, if there's a way to create some kind of a swale that would, that'll pick up runoff too. And then what kind of problems might that cause?
If you're going to put a trail in there, I think you're going to have a 10-foot retaining wall if you're going to.
Well, we're not planning a trail on Xerxes beyond this. It would be possibly in the future on Beard or something to keep the system going, but.
There's no, no trail, future trail proposed on Xerxes?
Not right now.
So anything in the foreseeable future would come here and possibly down here and connect into the trail?
So then can it just flow over the curb and into the curb and off?
It's the continually wet. That's when you get the ice, you get the algae.
On the curb?
From the sumps, yeah. Yeah, if it, especially if it starts to come together because of the contours. So I don't want to hold up the project, but I don't want to inherit that problem. And it maybe won't be there. So if there's a way to have a contingency plan, I'd be open to that, given these difficulties and it's.
Yeah, I think you're going to have water just from the, your runoff, your sheet flow from that rear yard, no matter what. So that's probably going to be 75% of it. Now, now we're talking about the five-hour drive in the burst, nonstop all summer.
When there's water in every three minutes, that's the problem. We made them all go to the front and there was algae. It'd be pretty easy to convince them we needed to do a fix. But when it goes down the hill on Xerxes, they're not going to care.
And it just isn't, there isn't storm sewer the way it is up there right now, so, or there isn't drain tile, so that'd all be extra cost.
Yep, yep.
And I think my, my concern isn't so much the algae buildup, although it's a nuisance and you get complaints about it. It's the potential for ice buildup and we get it in other portions of the community. It'll run down the curb and it'll freeze and it'll start to build. And we have places in the community that we need to have today where we'll have to go in until we fix them. We would have to go in with the loader or with the pow truck and you'd have to spend good portions of a day taking out up to four or more inches of sheet ice across the street.
We don't even know that these sump pumps are going to run.
That's true.
Yeah.
We're making a mountain out of a molehill, I think. We're willing to look at ways to try to control this if there's a future problem, but we don't anticipate a problem.
What I'm hearing Steve is that Rich is saying we don't know if there's going to be a problem, but if there is, it might, it becomes difficult to solve after the fact. Do you have any suggestions for a contingency plan?
Well, even in my mind, diverting this, it can be a, you're talking about that water running continuously where it builds up the algae. And if you're diverting it, it's not running in a set pattern. It's running more over the entire area.
Yep, I'm open to that. The only thing is that some sort of a ditch or diversion dike will also affect those storms and they can be managed in a safe way that it doesn't cause erosion or that the ditch is adequately sized or it can go over the ditch in a uniform. I'm open, there's just some engineering that has to happen.
Yeah, we're talking about less water coming this direction toward Xerxes post-development than we have pre-development. Significantly less water. We're taking more water towards the street.
I don't mean to interrupt, but.
There's a few different issues that I'd like to tackle and then come, and then still come back to this because that could impact the way the rest of it goes. So let's first talk about the access up Beard. Okay? Because that sounds to me like it's going to, like it's a big deal. There, the developers are conceded one lot, which brings us down to a 45-watt development, correct? Thoughts from the council? I have mine, but, and I can go first if no one else wants to talk first.
So how many driveways are we talking about?
One.
What's the turnaround?
What's the turnaround?
Rich and Renee, Steve and John, I indicated that the spacing, if there was, if it was based on topography, was possible to build where the wetland is, area is on the southeast side of Beard, would that spacing be roughly approximate to what we would allow a local street to connect onto that road?
I think we'd look for an eight-mile setback, but I have a measure.
I think it would be just shy of giving the spacing requirements between Oxford and the roads.
But it would be.
The intersection, I think it, as I, I remember measuring it and was just a little bit shy.
I'm going to stick with for policy, but we're also asking them to build a trail and deal with drainage now. And so we're adding costs to, to the development and if we remove the lot, we're taking away their ability to make them run, so. I don't think it really sets a precedence.
We are unanimous in that one. I am 100% for giving them the driveway. This is a very difficult project to develop. This is a concession that I think is maybe not ideal, but it's a fairly reasonable one to make, I think. Rich, your comments are fairly noted and are very reasonable, but I think if we want a project to happen here, this is kind of one of those things that we have to do. Otherwise, it's just not going to be feasible. So we're all in agreement. They can have the driveway off Beard, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
As long as it has the turnaround.
As long as it has the turnaround. All right, so let's move on to the trail.
What do you guys think? Again, I have opinions, but.
I would like it. I would like the trail.
You'd like the trail paved or just graded the way it currently is?
I don't want to keep going back and forth on that.
I'll talk first on this one. If it's graded, I think that's sufficient, in my opinion. I think the points that were made were correct. It's before, from now to the time where it's actually going to be an active trail, so much time is going to go by, maintenance is going to have to be done. Anyway, it doesn't feel like a.
I get from a good long-term planning scenario to require something like that. I think if we were a Lakeville, if we were a Bloomington, if we were a more developed city, yeah, I think then we kind of put our fists down and say, no, this is, we need to really adhere to our standards. I get that. I also get that we're. I get that, I also get that we're running the risk of causing potential issues down the road. I don't like that, but I think if it's graded, there's the opportunity for people to still use it even with it up, without it being paved. So that's my opinion. John's gonna disagree.
Would it be on private property or on public property?
It'd be within the regular...
So would we be mowing it?
To, to be honest, probably not to the standard of having people regularly walk on it. We would more like, it would probably get a ditch mowing.
You can see the lots here back up. Uh, there are, there are some steep slopes, um, coming off the back of these, some of these homes here. We're talking about the section right here.
If people wanted to use it, we wouldn't necessarily discourage them, but we have a surface that's just graded. It's not an all-weather surface. To encourage people to walk on something that hasn't been designed to be walked on or constructed to be walked on, also presents certain issues. It also does create a certain level of maintenance headaches to, to do that. Um, if it is graded in though, what it does is it sets expectations, it's gonna be there, and delineates where it's gonna be for the adjacent property owners. So there isn't the, oh, that trail came out of nowhere. They can see the trails graded in, they set the expectation. And when funding becomes available, we can construct it. Along Xerxes, that's about the place that, we're up to where it's going, we start going around the corner. Beyond that, it gets very difficult to construct anything because of the steepness of the topography. So you're probably gonna go to Beard, it would be part of a larger project. We've talked about this in other locations as well within the community, and it is the trail to nowhere discussion. Uh, the point that Steve and John were making is, are you saving the taxpayer money by having, are you just burdened? What's the timing? Because if you're not gonna build it till after that trail's down for its whole life cycle, and you're rebuilding it anyways, plus you've incurred the maintenance and the time. So it really comes down to, in my mind, from a financial standpoint, the expectation of the timing of when you would actually construct it.
He's part of two seventy-third, he's gonna be rebuilding this project too, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
Probably requiring, um, larger shoulders?
No, we're, there's really some pretty severe slopes on the south side. The road's already off-center to account for the, to rock the topography. So I don't know that the road will look a whole lot different than it does today, other than paved and cleaned up and straightened. So you're, it's gonna be uniform.
Ask to use the same street section as you currently see on Xerxes where it's curb and gutter on the inside. So the, the side adjacent, the north side of the road, curb and gutter, and then the south side of the side ditch section. That flows off into the wetlands itself.
Okay, with grading, Don, Kate?
I'm good with grading.
John? John's nodding and I'm just as happy as John's gonna get. All right, so we got two major issues cleared up.
I have a suggestion that you guys wanna consider that I'd be open to. At least under every driveway on that, just behind the sidewalk, throw a pipe in with a cap on each end so that we don't have to dig that driveway up if we ever have to put a tile in.
That's a great idea.
Uh, that would sweep the leg on a lot of headaches and cost. And at least goes towards a contingency plan.
It's a good idea, Rich.
Thank you.
Is this, council, does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
Again, John. John, Steve, any final comments before, I think we're ready to vote on stuff unless you have more to add?
We're anxious to get going.
All right.
I, I have a, a quick question, just to go back to that whole water issue. It, I can't find the thing in here. The trees, do you have quick access to where all those trees are gonna be that they're leaving behind? Yep, I can't, oh wait, here it is, okay. Are not, there's a lot of trees along there that are going to be staying. Will that not help?
It should, I hope so.
The majority of the water issue that we're talking about here.
No, I freely admit, Kate, I don't know if it'll be a problem. I'm just worried that it could be.
Because there is quite a few trees, if the green are what they're keeping, there is quite a few trees left along Xerxes there that I think...
Yep. The slopes are also very steep, but I think we just hit on a solution that sounds agreeable to everyone, so...
Okay.
It's pretty normal, yeah.
So...
All right, sorry, didn't mean to...
No, you, you're, you're fine.
That was a good point.
Rich, I appreciate you pointing or catching something and bringing it up and working through a solution. If, if someone wanted to make a motion, could they make a motion for all three of these items at once?
So, I think we have two items that are not in the development contract, but I'm, and I have one question too.
Continue for us.
Okay, so one is the circular drive for that lot. You know, it's to be added because of the requirement for a development contract.
I don't know that it's circular, it's just it's gotta have a turnaround.
Turnaround.
A turnaround. Under, and that's my question for you. So, all of the approval documents reference a site plan that shows the turnaround? So is that sufficient? I would say, i- it could be determined to be sufficient because, um, the approval documents reference, I'll just show you the... They reference this drawing, this exact plan sheet which shows the turnaround already. Or I would suggest adding it as a condition to the PUD ordinance for the development contract. I think it's covered by referencing this approved plan.
I think it's easier to put it into the development contract than the PUD ordinance.
Okay. That's fine.
Yeah. Because the PUD ordinance started in...
Okay.
Posted and...
So what does that mean for our actions?
So that's issue one. The second issue is Rich's issue. Uh, how do we make the change? Do we need to reference that in the development contract somehow? Because this issue is under...
Just something about capped drain tile under each driveway for the purpose of avoiding having to cut through and replace those driveways, should we ever have to put in a system?
And when you say each driveway, it's all...
Each driveway that won't have a individual sump pump connection provided. A lot of these have storm sewer in the back, it'll be fairly easy for them to connect, you know, stub. But for those homes, basically, from the L.A. circle to the west on the south side of Pete's Hill Trail, that's where I'm thinking of.
And then the single lot and the trail are provided within the plans that were submitted to you. So you basically made a decision consistent with the submitted, so you don't need to do anything consistent with that.
Is there anything else, Renee, or is, or that's it?
So, so what the council would be, being asked to do, and this is one of those figure you can say what he said, would be to, one, adopt ordinance nineteen ninety-nine, adopt resolution nineteen fifty, and adopt resolution nineteen fifty-one for approval of preliminary and final plat for Pete's Hill, approval of the development contract amended to include, uh, referencing language for the turnaround for the driveway for the lot, looking up here to Avenue, and the requirement for capturing tile under the driveways for those lots that do not have a sump pump connection.
So...
I'll opt in by timberman.
Second.
Second by C for sign. Any further discussion before we... On favor?
Aye.
If she passes, you have...
Thank you very much. Thank you for working on this project.
Would you like to give the council update on your schedule? Schedule? Would you like to give that council update on your schedule?
Sure, you can.
Dan? We're gonna need all of us for this. So the, right now we've got, um...
Right? No? What is the update, I think, elsewhere?
Yeah, on the construction to the...
So last time we were here for the planning commission, we had a little, we had some odd comments, made this all worked out. We've met with all of the neighbors, everything, we're all happy, easements are agreed upon. We're still waiting for signature, somewhere out of town, but that's all good. Uh, we're moving trees next week.
Might be.
Um, we have a pre-con meeting Monday. Trees we probably move next week for the permitting, we're probably moving dirt in three weeks. Dan?
Moving dirt in two weeks.
Two weeks, so, Dan knows more than I do. He's, awesome.
Utilities starting in a month, probably three, three, three weeks to a month.
It's gonna be fun to watch. It's a beautiful piece of land, we've walked it, we've been all over it, we've been studying it. But it's gonna be fun to watch the transition, it'd be great to get that ugly house out there, it's smashed.
We live right over there, so I'm sure we'll be trying to hide it.
Yeah, I mean, no one understands, closing two seventy-third for even a brief period of time is a challenge for the school district. So we've had conversation with our contractor about trying to sequence that as best as we can and move on those elements as quickly as we can. So, try to minimize the impact as much as we can.
And please reach out to us anytime. If you guys have questions, just reach out, we're here to help.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you very much.
Okay, honor reports.
I have nothing on beyond, we've already received annual updates, we're gonna discuss workshop. I mentioned that, I was gonna mention that also, but it came on the official. I will be attending two meetings over the next few business days related to street reauthorization and other concerns that have been raised by House of First on behalf of cities and local citizens.
Actually, I got a very nice voicemail from Angie Craig thanking us for your participation in this, which I thought was really nice, and it's, yeah, appreciate your work on that.
With that being said, can I say something?
Please.
I got a really nice, um, Jim Mulkin came in last night to the restaurant and said how much he truly, truly appreciated Tom Terry's help over at the food shelf.
How did you volunteer at the food shelf?
I was the president, we put in a few hours yesterday.
Thanks, Tom, appreciate that.
Just wanted you all to know that she did a great job.
Good job.
You have a heart?
Oh.
Wow!
If you look at Facebook, there's even pictures of him there. I know.
That's cool.
Okay, on to the next.
All right. Public Works, any comments to be passed on?
Uh, no. Well, Cory is glad that he's fully staffed. And even though the guys are still in that learning curve, he has already noticed the increase in bandwidth and what they're able to get accomplished by the current program, so...
Nice.
Does, uh, I'm assuming it's Public Works that goes around, does, like, will trim trees around signs and stuff?
Yep.
Right, is that something they're kinda getting caught up on now? That was their staff?
It's something they do seasonally.
Okay.
Whether permitting that, that's one of those works that they'll just go and do. They'll probably do most of it in the community in like one or two days. Is there a particular sign that you have concerns about?
I've noticed some that are like half-covered by trees, but I can connect with the offline where those are at.
If you could send me a text from those locations, I'll forward it on Cory.
On it. Police Department, you got anything?
A couple things. One, our brand new schedule starts September first. Very excited about that. Uh, and it coincides with Steve's and his final days of training. And as field training officers, if you see them wearing a uniform, it's a shadow phase to try to get all the attention from the citizen or whoever they have contact with, with Steve. Because the tendency is, when you're, two officers are gonna go to more senior than one that's, you know, they're gonna wanna try to talk to the trainer as opposed to the trainee. So this helps them develop their own skills. So during that final evaluation should be done next week, right before the first. So a couple of exciting things for the police department, we're looking forward to having that extra staff. And that comment's been also mirrored by the county, they're looking forward to us having more staff on at night and more consistent, so they can focus on their other parts of their community that they have video, so...
Any questions for? Thanks. Let's see, Fire Department's on here, I'm sure there's no updates from the Fire Department, but I do see this was given out to everybody. It actually is kind of a cool event if you haven't been to it, so...
Can I real quick, that point of impact that Tim brought up? You have teenage kids gonna drive in the next few years, awesome program. In order to kinda learn more about it, I went to Shop Peace last month and ended up presenting, because one of the law enforcement people backed out, just couldn't be there. So I ended up presenting a little bit, phenomenal program. Ours supposedly is even bigger and better than the Shop Peace one, so I'm very excited to be part of it. If you know anybody in the community that has teenage kids, it's, it's awesome. Not only does it help with the time your driver has to drive before their license, but it also creates programs. I had one familiar that, that was next to ten to nine, so...
Engineering?
I got enough.
All right. Uh, Community Development, Renee has stepped out. Do you think there was anything, okay. Parks? CCEC?
Meeting was two days ago. It's all about the Halloween party now.
It's all about the Halloween party?
About it.
Okay. All right. Uh, other committee reports, first thing is scale. I was unfortunately not able to make the last one.
It was at the Regional Training Center. Very cool, I've never been there. If you haven't been there, you really should go look at it. I did forward an email to Tom, he'll forward it to you guys. Hopefully the link, I'm not very savvy when it comes to computers, so I'm hoping the link I put on there works. But it just kinda goes through the slideshow that was used, um, at the scale meeting, explaining what's done at the Regional Training Center, who's affected by it, that kind of thing. It was really, I mean, amazing, it was pretty cool. Oh, yeah.
John, you're part of a scale committee, correct?
Yes. The Transportation, um, that meets Monday night.
Okay.
And MVTA meets Wednesday, so I got a busy Wednesday.
Tom, can you add John's updates for those committees to future agendas?
Do they have an official title for the Transportation one?
Yeah, um...
Slug.
Slug.
Learning.
I'm gonna assume you guys can connect with that offline, right? All right. MVTA? Moving, it's Josh?
No.
No, MVTA's...
Oh, it is, Josh, thirty-five.
Wednesday night.
Wednesday.
Okay. Josh isn't here for thirty-five, we had the Chamber of Commerce, all righty. All right, any discussion by council?
Um, I have one thing. No report yet?
Nope. No.
Really? No report at all?
No.
No.
I've heard that there was one submitted to staff.
Yeah, it was supposed to be submitted today again.
Oh, I had not heard that either. The, uh, Mr. Klein, last, Mr. Klein attended the planning commission meeting last month. And at that time, he had indicated, and that was a Tuesday night meeting, he indicated that we'd receive it that Friday or Monday. We have not seen anything yet.
I heard a rumor that it was supposed to come today, but...
Maybe it'll show up tomorrow.
Maybe it'll show up to Carl.
One item, we got the community picnic Saturday. I may be out of town actually, unfortunately. I'm just curious who...
I'll be there.
You'll be there? Don?
What time is it again?
Um, it's from eleven to one. If you're coming to help, we appreciate help from ten or ten-thirty until possibly as late as to it. It usually doesn't take very long to break down.
It's eleven to two on that. Yeah, that's what it says here. I mean, I might be able to be there in the morning, but I didn't realize I had a commitment out of town. John, are you gonna make it?
I'm out of town.
You're out of town? So Kate, you'll be there?
I have an appointment at eleven-thirty, but... I don't know.
So you don't think you'll be able to make it?
Probably for an hour and a half or something.
Okay.
I'd be able to, yeah.
Yeah, even that would be awesome.
I can get all my stuff done before, appointment, signed papers, gotta go, and I can be here.
Awesome, I appreciate it, I always like going to that, but I, I at least like that as many council votes as possible.
Open your voice.
Right on.
I have my staff there as well, calls out, and I was able to secure the county mounted posse, bringing their horses out with the kids and stuff.
All right.
Oh, really? That's awesome.
I called them up kinda last week, once I wondered if they'd be available, and they were able to secure a couple horses, so they're gonna be there too.
Cool.
That's really cool.
That was cool, they were at the parade one?
Yeah, that was neat. I hope I can get them again for that, so...
It's awesome.
That is really neat.
Any, that's all I have, any other discussion? Anyone interested in a...